Junior class recently ran a very successful food slash personal item drive in lieu of the one that's usually ran by the link crew. So they, the junior class officers set up this food drive and had people volunteer to stand and collect the items. And they organized holiday food baskets made from that food drive. And also through staff donations and they delivered to families who needed the food or the materials. And with extras going to the cupboard, so everything is being put to use. And also as they student council gears up, they surely will provide a lot more valuable input than what we can do by ourselves and we're looking forward to working with them to bring that information to the board. The IHS Wind Ensemble and Concert Band also sent out a recording of the song Slay Ride recently, which I'm sure many of you have heard. And it had a pretty good reception from both staff and students, not only for the music, but also because as I personally heard. That teachers were excited to be able to see students, like pictures of students that they normally wouldn't be able to see. Or that they don't normally see through pictures. Not only that, the Spring Play was recently announced. It's a killer party. It's a murder mystery musical that was actually written during the pandemic. And it's definitely something to look forward to. The Key Club also hosted a teacher appreciation week and students were able to submit to a Google form about positive experiences they had with the teacher or just to thank them. Both student leaders and admin, who'll be discussed a little bit more, are continuing to work at reaching out to students who aren't easy to be reached and are, they're trying to help everybody feel a greater attachment to the community, whether that be in a larger sense or maybe in more smaller club sense.
In a recent meeting with the administration, we learned about the planned operation We Got You. It is meant to actively check in with students over the break. As many people are worried about students, especially without school and just over the Christmas break. So we like the intentions behind the project and we like how, how active the administration is being to reach out to all the students and I'm sure they'll talk about it more later. On that note, a presentation by Margot Devren, who's an English teacher was sent out last week to students and it specifies where students can look for support. So that includes technology, academics, mental health, equity, inclusion and family support. And if any
Yeah, so on top of that, we are, are and are planning to talk with students and counselors about creating more mental health support system for students. Specifically utilizing Google meets and other virtual spaces and utilizing asynchronous Wednesdays. Ms. Arnold, the Ithaca High School Director of Student Activities, is already hosting a a Google meet that is open to all high school students on Wednesday mornings where students can drop in and just talk about whatever they need to with Arnold and with all the other students there about topics from homework to mental health issues to sibling rivalries. And it seems that opportunities like that are really helpful for many, many students. And we looking forward to working with all of the support staff at IHS and with student leaders to create more of those spaces. If anyone is unfamiliar with Operation We Got You, basically, the Ithaca High School Administration is enlisting the school faculty to personally reach out to high school students just for a quick check in over the break, just to basically let students know that they have our backs and are looking out for the students. So, yeah.
On another note, many of you know that last Thursday was a snow day. Many students reported that it provided a nice break to their mental health. A big part was that teachers were instructed to assign minimal work, so they thought that the snow day was very well, well received. And they took advantage of it to rest and recharge. But on the next day, Friday, it was announced that Wednesday would be a synchronous day when it usually is asynchronous. This, which was very unexpected for students and teachers because everyone was mentally prepared for that asynchronous Wednesday. So since they're really surprised about this, they had a lot of questions. And just out of curiosity, they wanted to know like whose decision was it to make this Wednesday synchronous?
Thanks, Grace. It was not mine, but just kidding guys, yeah, I don't, anyway, we'll find that out. But thanks, it's guy, order responses? Anyone wish to weigh in?
Yeah, again, thanks so much for the update and that's, I'm really happy to hear about the outreach during the break. And just about that synchronous asynchronous day, something that I've been wondering about, kind of going the future, is that having an asynchronous day is something that came about as a result of, you know, the pandemic and how we had to schedule it. But just something to kind of think about, I've been wondering is, would that be something that would work? In the future, like when one goes back to in-person learning after the pandemic? Like, is there something about having a day of the week where you don't have such a rigid schedule that's actually helpful? So just to put that question out there.
In truth, I don't really know. It's, it's hard to look past the whole situation we're in and try to imagine what school will look like post pandemic? Whether we'll return to our old five days a week in person schedule or whether there will be some kind of twist to it. I think that right now with all of us either being hybrid learners or online, at least in the middle of high schools, that off day, I guess in a way, is really beneficial. Especially since we spend all of our other days just staring at a screen. Which I have found much more mentally exhausting than say just going to school. And I know that most other students feel the same. I think that in terms of this upcoming Wednesday. I like, I, in general, I think that like, in the event of cancellations or anything like that, like utilizing a Wednesday is probably the right thing to do. I think that with this upcoming Wednesday, it was just everyone had kind of just like felt that it would be the first day of break. Which is why it was so surprising to, to students and staff when it was announced that it would be a synchronous day. But to answer your question, I think that that is something that I guess we'll have to figure out when, when we get there.
And that's that, I, I like the question. I know Dr. Brown has said on a number of occasions that the industry of education, for lack of a better word, is going to be permanently changed post whatever we find ourselves in. I also know that we have pretty strict mandates by New York State law in terms of meeting hours. Much like we do at Ithaca College in Cornell, right? That there are a certain number of actual class time hours that you have to have. So it'll be interesting to see how we negotiate, you know, the possibility of innovation as well as matched up with what New York State mandates we, we do in terms of number of days, number of classroom hours, et cetera. So I'm sure other folks have other thoughts, but I, I'm intrigued by the possibility of what we can do moving forward.
Hi, hi, Young. Students, avatars, on behalf of your classmates, this is Eldred. Thanks again for being as engaged in you as you have been. We really appreciate it. Even if we don't all jump up and down and celebrate you every word, know that we appreciate them. Alex, I wanted to address something specifically that you said. Thanks for taking the step to put together camp packages for your colleagues. Lord knows, that's one additional burden or concern that we don't want our students to face during this holiday time. When there, when there are actually families who may not, who may be facing food insecurity and feel that they are being materially deprived in this time of gift giving. Now that I've said that, I will also say, I really thank you and, and your colleagues for discussing the phone banking system, or I think you said the, the Zoom meetings that adults are trying to put together. It's important for everybody to be reminded during this time that the sense of material deprivation is not the only stressor people are feeling. Right? In fact, there are things going on here that far exceed your capacity to get a gift on Christmas, even though that's, that's, that's critical to some people. And you mentioned something really quickly, I'm not sure everybody on this call would even be aware of. You said the excess food was, were going to go to the food cabinets. For those of you who don't know, there is a series of cabinets around town where kind people are stocking food. And also, that's also not just for people with privilege to give to the underprivileged. There's one within walking distance of, where my apartment and Nicole's house. And I can walk there and just about any morning and grab a dozen eggs. Right? Which means I don't have to go into a store. I don't have to get into my car. I don't have to try and get into the queue to have just something that's simple delivered. But I know both Wegmans, well, I think Wegmans is doing this, Chris, you can confirm. I know Green Star has several shopping carts set up in front of the store. So people can put items into those carts for distribution throughout those boxes around town. It is lifted people's spirits in a way that, that I can't explain. The messages I'm getting about it are profound. Folks who are sponsored have literally changed people's feelings about this community. So I just wanted to piggyback on all those good things. Thank you again, young people. Alexander, you rock.
Anyone else? Before we move on?
I just want to add that I appreciate the student reps each week talking about mental wellness. I feel like you all are de-stigmatizing, talking about mental wellness and I personally appreciate that. And I look forward to hearing from Lily or LeVell in terms of what steps we're taking or break thinking about next year to reinforce students' emotional needs and how teachers are taking that into account. Load and grading and things of that nature.
Thanks, Nicole. Anyone else before we move on? Thanks, if not, thanks, if the guy, that's, let's move on so we can get to our business of the meeting. The consent agenda that we see, right, that is in front of you, there's a variety of items on it. Motion in second, then we can address any questions.
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Maura, and thank you, Pat. Any questions regarding what is on the consent?
Rob, I think it'd be important for folks to know a little bit more about the roof replacement bid that we discussed in facilities.
Absolutely. This is not right, it's item 6.6, but it is a resolution to accept the letter recommendation from the facilities committee and our construction managers to accept the the Ithaca High School roof, roof replacement bids. Multiple bids to replace Ithaca High School's various roofs over the next two summers. This is the next phases of the work that is going on in the district. For the numbers, it was under, under our budgeted number. And so that's always a good thing, but we're looking forward to that work beginning. It will be staged at the various buildings of the Ithaca High School campus in the summer of 2021. And then finishing up in 2022. There is ongoing work next summer in K building. Really, that's really the first phase. And so we're evolving into phase one, phase two, as we finish up the work this summer. So again, good, good responses on the bids and we're moving, moving forward.
And by a pardon, Robin, folks should know as well that the, the bids that we're looking at are part of the capital reserve project. This is not coming out of the normal ICSD yearly or annual budget. This is part of the, our long-term capital reserve project of maintenance.
My, in, in fact, it is the, out of the bond referendum, the $120 million bond referendum. That's being phased out over a number of years. So and there is a resolution to designate and dispose of surplus property. Chris, you all reviewed that in finance, I believe. And apparently we have more surplus properties since we burned the, a one-ton dump plow truck burned up in the Boynton parking lot. I'm not sure how much surplus we're going to get out of that. I'm not even know whether that was one of the old ones that we have to replace.
I think that's officially scrap metal, Rob.
It's already partially melted. Pretty spectacular shot in the Ithaca Voice, I believe, but unfortunate. Unfortunate, but this equipment works and works every day and it doesn't need to be replaced. Especially when there's an engine fire and it destroys the whole thing. Anyway, are there any other questions? There's a few other items that you can see. Are we good? All right, Tricia, if you please, it's been moved and seconded and call the roll.
Rob Ainsley? Aaron Croyle? Sean Eversley Bradwell? Eldred Harris? Nicole LaFave? Moira Lang? Chris Malcolm? Anne Reichlin? Pat Wazle?
Thanks, everyone. Dr. Brown and School District Business, if you could segue us to the next items.
Yes, sir. It's good to see you, members of the board and others in the community this evening. We will segue quickly, but first, just a clarification for the folks on the line and in the community. When there's a snow day, there's a snow day still. There were questions abound when, last week, and we will have more snow, I'm sure. But when we announce a snow day, the entire school district shuts down, both in-person and virtual learning experiences. That's for many reasons. We have many educators who come into our spaces to teach virtually. Our operations continue to go. Our technology department is active. Our food service department is active. And we have buses that not only serve young people in our school district, but serve young people all over our region. So when there's a snow day and we cannot operate or we can't get folks in safely and our buses cannot move around safely. It needs to shut down everything. So I know there were questions out there. Some school districts are doing a virtual day when the snow falling. Have different circumstances, but for us, when there's a snow day, which leads to us all monitoring our mental health. I said, we had that snow day, I wanted people to stop and get off screens and go play. And many people did do that and we received many pictures also. And to Ms. LaFave's question, we've been sharing our ruler resources with students and staff. We've asked our educators not to assign work over the upcoming break. And we've put in place a number of other initiatives and requests to, to both mental health of our young people and adults. And I know Mary Grobe, did I leave out anything? Anything you would add, Mary or Lily, to what we're doing to support mental health at this moment?
I'd like to add an appreciation for the students noting that that was a well-needed mental health break. And we wish the same for our educators over this break. Along those lines, there are also a number of caregiver resources in January that will have been shared. And will continue to be shared with educators, but specifically with families directly in partnerships with PTA. Some elementary schools have hosted evenings introducing ruler and the resources, strategies and activities that can be done at home. And that has been nice to receive that feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Grove. With that, we'll transition to Ms. Patak, who has a team of outstanding educators and young people who wants to share what's happening at LACS with instruction and all things ACS. So Deb, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. We are excited to spend a few moments with you. Doos you to Zara Gervais and Kayden Lyons and Bronwyn Exter. The focus of our time tonight is to update you how LACS as an alternative democracy school is working to refine democracy in this new landscape and keep the all voices heard and amongst student bodies as well as the staff body alive and well in these contentious times. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Zara and to Kayden and
Thank you. Thank you, Deb. Thank you, Dr. Brown, and to the board for having us. My name is Bronwyn Exter. I teach social studies at LACS and I'm also a graduate of ICSD LACS, BJM. And can I, can I share my screen? Does that have an option? I think it is. It's different than I'm used to on Google Meet. So I might need a help finding my tab.
You see the share button at the bottom, bro?
Yeah, I have that on, but I can't find my tab. Well, start with this one and then maybe minimize and see if that helps. I think I'll find it. Can you see my presentation? Yay, okay. So I'm going to hand it over to Kayden, who is a senior, and Zara, who is an eighth grader. We we had to put this presentation together to kind of reflect our, our desire to be nimble and also the centrality of democracy to our culture, our program, our student experience, how we are unique as a public school. All of that is not just symbolic, it's also how we make decisions. That democracy is central to our everyday functioning and our student involvement in that is central. So it wasn't something we could let go of during distance learning. We had to get creative and experimental. We have this presentation focused on our all-school meeting and how we've adapted that to, to these times. At the same time, that's only one of many of our democratic structures. It's kind of the most, it's central in the middle of the week on Wednesdays and it's the most showy. And it's the one where a visitor might come in and go, wow, everyone's in a room making a decision together. But we have these other structures, the school governance committees and our decision-making document that disperses power. We have our staff meeting consensus model. All of those would be topics for another night. But tonight we'll focus on ASM and I will hand it over to Zara.
Hi, I'm Zara. I'm here. So this is a zine in the 90s showing the beginning of our ASM process. Showing, this was originally in the Black Box Theater, I think. It might have been the gym, too. The showing, this really has been a staple in our school since the very beginning. I do want to hit the next slide. This is it today, obviously before COVID, because this would definitely not be possible. But this shows the whole building in one room celebrating our democracy by voting out proposal. We usually have the bleachers down, but sometimes we do not. We switch up kind of the rotation of people, where people can sit during this usually. To kind of see how it can be the most effective usually. But yes, this was in, I think, May of last year. Pass this over to Kayden.
Yeah, so how people get their ideas on the agenda is that any staff or student at LACS can submit either a proposal or dilemma form. In the past, proposal forms have been more popular. It's a very straightforward format. You write the proposal, you put your name on it and you can remain anonymous if you want. And something that we've developed kind of recently, but we've had it for a number of years and are really working on promoting it this year, is the dilemma form. So the dilemma form allows students to be able to engage in student democracy without already having the solution. So they bring a problem and from that often proposals are generated, but it brings a discussion to the school. And then if people come up with their proposals, they can. So there are lots of different types of school meetings. All-school meeting, quarter-school meeting and half-school meetings are all pretty straightforward. And then there's also emergency ASMs, which usually happen when there's a walkout or something like that. And they're kind of hard to have this year. We haven't had one yet this year. Sorry. And then there are also infusion make rotations. That's something special that usually happens in spring. And there are cohort meetings and then I'm going to hand it back to Zara.
So this is our most frequent format during COVID is the spokes council setup. Which is where a family group will send one student that wants to speak on the issue or topic of the week. So we would usually have this again on Wednesdays and discuss pretty much any topic with, during this. But that, yes, this is our most common one. We also have a seven SM, which is where we split the school into sevens. And it's around 50 people and we, everyone discusses the topic at hand.
I'll add that we were engaging in a spoke selection process in family groups that elevates new members every time there's a new dilemma or proposal. One, one thing that we've been experimenting with and is really fundamental to some changes we've been making is to make sure that every person leading a meeting or representing a family group brings their own personality into it. So that everyone in the school can see that leadership is, is shared. Anyone has access to it. And it's not just one type of person who gets to be a school leader in our school, it's everybody. So we want to rotate the spokes and also make that dynamic between family group and spokes. Really kind of active and vibrant and exchange of information. This is all supposed to happen in one room, the spokes council. Where we tried it once last year where we had everyone clumped on the outside of our, our beautiful gym in family groups and then sending a spoke in and out, in and out to discuss. So we've also been trying to change up our modes of communication. This is just the first two pages last year of a zine that an alum last year put together. Trying to get across this how to access these, the language of democracy, it's, it's supposed to be homegrown. It's supposed to be student-centered and we're trying to keep it as fun as we possibly can. In addition to the decisions we make, having weight. So we have a bunch of other projects underway. I think I'll, I'll close with some recent alums and some quotes that they left us with last spring, even as they closed the year. This is Alana Crave. Having gone to LACS since sixth grade, I never really internalized the fact that we are very different and unique and different school. Actually, I can't see the whole quote. Kayden, would you mind reading it?
In our system of democracy, because I've never really experienced the standard. I was able to see our school for what it was, a chaotic, ever-evolving, fixer-upper democracy. And I was able to appreciate it. I learned I learned that democracy is messy, it's trial and error, it's listening and revising and revisiting, it's patience and a vital need to do right by everyone. It's okay if it's not perfect. That is what makes this democracy.
Thanks. And another one from Randy Watts.
Do you want me to read this one, too?
Yes, please.
There is no exact structure for a democratic school, which is one of its most important qualities, in my opinion. Democracy must be adaptable. What works at LACS may be completely different from what works somewhere else. Democracy, especially small-scale democracy, is what the participants make it. Because of this, a democracy has no hope of being truly democratic unless all stakeholders are truly involved.
And we'll close with this quote by Pearlwood, who made the zine.
Our school changes so much that it will certainly continue to need tweaking, refining, and reimagining. Democratic schooling and democratic culture means much more than simply meeting and voting in ASMs. Democracy is the culture of trust between students and teachers that our community has fostered and continues to strengthen. Democracy is giving students power in more ways than a vote. Democracy is listening. Democracy is valuing each opinion and perspective. Democracy is naming who is not in the room and keeping them in mind. Democracy is collaboration, community, and trust that you are both being looked out for and have been given the power to look out for yourself and others. Democracy is not one word or a solid idea. It is many, and what's more, sometimes it is instead a feeling.
Happy to answer any questions if you have one, if you have time.
This is Ann. I just have a question. Thank you so much for that. I love, especially those last quotes when you think about some of the dysfunction in government. It's really nice to see a really fresh and kind of personal interpretation of what democracy is and can be. And one of the questions that I have, thinking about how you've been, you know, it's such a community-based school, what it's been like and how it's changed your thinking when you're kind of combining remote, you know, kind of issues are different and how that, you know, decision, you know, when you have a big group meeting and you're doing it on Zoom, like how is that impacted, how you think about the process and the kinds of issues that even come up?
I can start by saying that the the school meeting is facilitated by a committee of students and together with family group, that committee meeting with it is twice a week, is one of the most engaged parts of my week where I feel like we're problem-solving. We still have this feedback loop. How did the last meeting go? What do we need to adapt? How are people's public speaking skills evolving? So I think our community is strengthened by the experimentation because that's what we've centered in the process. Does that answer your question, though?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I think the other thing is I was just thinking about like the kinds of things that you're even working with or thinking about as a community this year have got to be pretty different, I would, I would think.
Zara facilitated our most recent two spokes councils. Do you want to speak to what that was about?
Sure. Our most recent spokes council was about online learning and how we can slightly adjust it to help everybody learn better, ideally, because we are learning, and we're learning a lot through this, but there is definitely ways we can improve it. And that's kind of what the topic was, and it was very interesting just hearing everybody's perspective because everyone has such a different way of learning and really being able to have a spokes council where they'd be like, oh, everyone in my family group had a different way of learning, and I think there's an interesting way of how we can maybe try to incorporate this was it was similar to an original ASM, the sense of it's trying to better the school that we go to and but it's just been adjusted to affect online learning instead of a person. I think that answers, but yeah.
No, that's great. Thanks.
Hi. One thing I want to say is, as liaison to ACS, I've attended a bunch of all-school meetings in person. I've yet to be at one that's done virtually. You know, I love the way you're always evolving it and obviously, you know, COVID and and distance learning has forced a lot of evolution. I love the new approach to allowing people to suggest a dilemma. I think that's fantastic. I love it. I'm just wondering if now doing these meetings virtually, whether there's anything that stands out as something that has been better or surprising in a pleasing way when you're doing something virtually that you used to do in person.
Kayden, I'm not sure if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, I can. So I, I mean, I've observed the spokes councils this year. And I think one of the things about spokes council is because it's self, well, it's not self-selected, but the people who show up, they're passionate about the topic. So we've gotten to hear a lot more from people because there are just fewer people in the room. So we get to hear a lot more and a lot more focused conversation, which definitely has its pros and was something we've been kind of not lacking in prior years, but something we haven't gotten as much of, is that really just a lot of focused, passionate energy.
And adding to that, the.
I would also. Do you mind, Bronwyn?
Absolutely not.
I think I would also add, or rather, that it's an opportunity for individual students to step into participatory leadership in a way that in an ASM, when one voice was spoken in front of almost 300, it takes a boldness and it takes an individual personal leadership to speak that voice in the moment. But there's a, there's a new, there's a new synergy when a group that is a family group has someone step forward to say, I feel passionate about this particular dilemma or this particular proposal, yet I'm willing to speak for the group. And I think all of us understand as representatives on the school board, you're not representing your own voice, but you're representing a greater good. And that, I think, is just going to be a real silver lining in a new experience for the kids that step forward at different points in the year to be a spoke for the council that hears and determines the proposal and the dilemma for a group that they care deeply about. So I think that that's a.
Thanks.
This is more a statement than a question, and being a parent of a proud LACS graduate who I watched transform to have a voice and utilize that democracy to share her argument, her decision-making, and her mental prowess. I lost many an argument to my daughter once she got to LACS and navigated their process. And Bronwyn, I see you smiling, so you could attest to that. But the democratic process and the ability for students really to represent themselves and their student body, I honestly, I didn't understand until I saw it in action, and I appreciate it more now having had four kids go through ICSD, three go through, you know, traditional high school, and then one go through LACS and seeing how she navigated that and how that helped and assisted her mature and grow. It's truly appreciative. So thank you, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, and your daughter inspired so many younger students as she grew into her voice. So I think that there was a little bit of nervousness. I had a lot of nervousness actually leaving those seniors who left those quotes behind. We had a really strong cohort of seniors in our agenda committee. And I was scared of the leadership vacuum coming into the fall needlessly because new leaders rose up and to fill their shoes.
Just want to add, I've always been a fan of LACS. Deb, thanks for doing what we asked you to do, increasing the capacity and the level at which they do it. I've dealt with enough LACS students to just say this. Be careful. What you put into them will come right back to you, and they come after you. And I love it. I've grown to expect it and appreciate it.
I have a question. I heard mention of family groups a few times when talking about the spokes council formatted stuff. And I'm not, I'm kind of confused as to what that is. Yeah.
Kayden or Zara, do you want to start? And say how you experience it or give your student voice to that?
Yeah, I think I can, if that's okay with everybody. Pretty much what it is, it's a group of usually 10 to 20 people that gather usually twice a week. And with the method that we're doing during COVID, we wind up discussing the topic at hand during it, during that portion of time. And then that we, they, the person that wants, is speaking the most kind of confidently or wants to talk about it at the actual spokes council will get nominated by the rest of their family group to go. I think I could probably add more to that, but I'm going to let Bronwyn do it because I cannot think of it right now.
I think I'm going to chime in. Adam at LACS Family Group this year is everyone's soft place to land. In the past, family group has had very specific roles. The family group leader is the person that is the faculty member that is supposed to know the student most intimately. If a student is struggling or excelling, everyone lets the family group leader know. So they, as the family group leader in the family group can celebrate or surround the kid with support. The family group leader has the ounce of knowing the kid's personal life, the kid's school life, the student's academic life and engagement. In time of COVID, we decided to significantly decrease the number of students that were in the family group. So we tried to limit it to 10 only. And we now have a social emotional wellness curriculum that the family group leader is owning. But to summarize, it's a place of connection, it's a soft to land, and it's a place for everyone to know if there is one person in the building that really gets me and understands me intimately, it should be my family group leader.
Other questions, comments for the group?
I just have one, just to follow up on just hearing about the family group. Is there any way that would be applicable or one could do something similar in the high school? Just, I mean, I don't think there's an answer, because it's putting it out there as a concept.
Maybe something to ask Mr. Trumbull rather than these folk.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I was just thinking, though, it sort of gets to some of the needs that were talked about a little bit earlier in terms of kind of some of the emotional needs for kids in the high school, which is a much bigger school. But as with everything under this pandemic, it's like, you know, people are looking for different kinds of solutions, and it seems like this is something that, you know, might be applicable. So anyway.
I know that there are definitely systems in place at IHS with people that serve in that role, but it's not as systemic as every kid being assigned to a system such as that. But there definitely is this work going on in a robust and tender and caring way at IHS. But you're right, it would be elevating it to the magnitude of an actual system within the educational system. And, you know, we collaborate all the time with people at IHS, and there definitely is this work happening there. It's just not at the systemic level.
Thanks.
Bronwyn, you are an alum of LACS, correct? Right? And that was, well, it wasn't last year, it was a few years ago, I assume. So LACS, I assume, has changed a bit since you were there. So and Deb, so LACS is going to change going forward. So what's the, is there a collective vision on what what do we want LACS to be or look like in the future? What's the next thing for LACS? I'll open it up to students and everyone.
Such an easy question. Deb, you muted. We're doing some vision and mission work in staff meeting for the short term, just to imagine how we land this school year. And then I think if trying to take whatever we can out of this year, at least we got to experiment. At least we got to challenge some of our systems and ask tough questions. And how we come out of it, I think, will be a good answer to that question. But I think with, from, I've been staff member for 10 years and in the generational shifts of the school, so much turnover in the last few years has only increased everyone's curiosity about who we are and what we do, how we are alternative, what our branding philosophies are, and how they need to adapt to be more democratic and more alternative and more true. I'm hopeful that we'll weather the year.
I appreciate that. Thanks. Deb, anything else you want to share?
I think so in the front. I reported out last year that Bronwyn was someone that went with me. Can people hear me?
We can now.
Yeah, okay. I think I reported last year that Bronwyn was one of the staff members that went with me to the Progressive Education Network. You know, weekend of think tank of progressive education, public school institutions, and Dave Lehman actually met us there, and we did a lot of reflecting about bringing the past future. And while we are working hard to keep democracy alive, we are also committed to looking at the underbelly of democracy in the United States around supremacy, around equity, of race and culture. And our students and families, our BIPOC students and families have been speaking loudly about our need to grow, our need to lean into our discomfort, and our need to have the gift that this school district has given us in alternative education, looking at power, looking at equity, looking at what education means in this, in times such as this. So we're also really rolling up our sleeves and diving into those issues in a very concrete way. And I feel very privileged to not only be a part of the district, but it's a real gift to be a part of this instance.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you, Bronwyn. Any other, sorry, any other board members, any questions, anything? Dr. Brown, you're good. Okay. Well, it was, it was great to hear from LACS, and we appreciate it. And I saw things tonight that I wasn't, I had not seen before. So I'm going to think a hi guy. So it's all new, but it's not all new to me, but I appreciate very much the work that, and the work and students of LACS, and we look forward to being on the journey with you, Deb, and Bronwyn, and students. And on the other side of all this, things will be different, and it will be different for public education and what. And it will be different for public education and whatever form, uh, we eventually, uh, arrive at or what we do coming, coming out of all this. And, uh, we just hope it's, uh, better for kids and, and, and better for their education, better for the community. And so we'll, uh, we'll work with you to make that happen. So, uh, so appreciate it. Uh, have a great, uh, have a great holiday. Happy, happy Christmas and, uh, Merry New Year and all that. But, uh, we'll, we'll see you all soon. And, uh, Dr. Brown, we have a few more, uh, items to get to and we'll let everybody go and, uh, enjoy, enjoy the holiday.
Thank you, Brown.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you.
Go ahead, Dr. Brown.
Yeah, Mr. Talk, you ready to go? All right, we're gonna transition to talking about surveillance testing and what we hope to have in place and implement it on January the fourth.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. So for those of you who may not know me, my name's Lily Talcett and I have the honor of serving as deputy superintendent for the Ithaca City School District. And with me is Carrie Burke, our coordinator of health services and wellness. We're going to provide a quick overview this evening of our Ithaca City School District voluntary COVID-19 surveillance testing program. Uh, first question that we tend to get, which we're happy to answer, is why implement a testing program? You know, we're not in the yellow zone or an orange zone or a red zone yet, it's part of the, uh, cluster zone initiative. But we are, uh, we recognize that by implementing a program, we can quickly identify asymptomatic individuals and then very quickly begin that isolation and quarantine process through the Tompkins County Health Department. They are the only ones who can, uh, put folks into isolation and quarantine, of course. Um, but it ultimately allows us to more seamlessly support that in-person and distance learning. Pardon the analogy, but, um, I was telling Dr. Brown and some other folks earlier that in some ways, it's like we've been trying to do surgery with a weed whacker, right? Someone gets sick, we find out that, um, they're positive later in the week, but they've already been in the building for several days prior to that. Um, and then we've, we have to close the entire building shift to distance learning um, and then engage in that contact tracing. Now, the program that we've designed and that we've worked with other school districts and learned from their systems and are now implementing here is much more like a scalpel, right? So now we're able to very quickly identify folks and then make those transitions to distance learning, um, to allow for less disruption for everyone and more, uh, more in-person for those who need it, right? And who has, um, who are currently there and, um, continue seamless distance learning support. Carrie's gonna talk a little bit about what the testing program actually looks like.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to be with you here, uh, and talking about testing. Uh, so who will be tested? The testing program is voluntary. It is open to all in-person students and staff. Our goal, our aim is to test twenty percent of in-person students and staff over a two-week period. Again, testing is not mandatory and we're, we are in the process of securing consent from parents and caregivers for students. We are using, uh, Abbott Binax Now rapid antigen tests. They are provided to us for free by the New York State Department of Health. Uh, the test itself is a non-invasive process. Um, it uses nasal swabs, which I'm sure you've seen with other, uh, COVID testing. Uh, I have one here, sterile swab. It involves swabbing the front of the nose or the interior nares. It's not the nasal pharyngeal swab that some of you may be familiar with. It goes much further back and it's much more uncomfortable. So it's a few seconds in each nostril. Uh, testing for most of our older students actually will be, uh, self-sampling supervised by school nurses and other trained personnel. And for our youngest learners, our nurses will be responsible for collecting samples from them. The tests themselves are, are remarkable for their, um, design and ingenuity. I have one here. They're quite small. As you can see, um, there's a testing card. This is the entire test. Once collecting the sample, you place it, uh, inside of the card and then seal it and then wait for a period of fifteen minutes to receive the result, which displays at the top, uh, through a series of lines. It's been compared in some cases to a pregnancy test. Uh, it's very similar in its, its design there. The testing will be taking place at our, uh, school sites in our school buildings. Uh, we've been working closely with administrators and nurses to identify those locations. Uh, testing will begin when we resume, um, instruction in, on January fourth. Uh, we are planning to conduct testing on Mondays at the elementary level and on Mondays and Thursdays at the secondary level to capture those students, um, in the various cohorts due to the, the hybrid design. Uh, and I'd already mentioned how we're collecting, uh, these swabs, uh, these samples. And we are structuring it, uh, rather than randomly, randomly sampling individuals across an entire building. We are randomly selecting classrooms. Um, this again is, is informed by the, by the input of other districts that have been engaged in these testing activities. Uh, when testing a given classroom, you, as soon as you identify positives, you know that that entire cohort is likely going to be subject to quarantine. Um, and so that's been the most expedient method of, of sampling and then, uh, responding to any positive cases.
Thanks, Carrie. We have a lengthy, frequently asked questions document located here. We also have a very brief overview that's listed there. Permission forms are also translated in multiple languages also on, on this. If you visit this URL as well. Um, and again, we've been really grateful for the support and excellent work of our nurses and our administrators as they've helped us stand up this program, um, in, in record time. However, I will say, uh, thank goodness we have been planning this for a few months now, knowing that we might have been, um, designated as a school district in a yellow zone. So just know that months of planning did go into this, even though we're able to stand this up relatively quickly. With that, we'd like to pause and open it up to any questions from the board.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Um, all right. So I'm really trying to picture what this looks like, particularly, um, at the secondary level. So when you say it's a random selection of classrooms, what does that look like at, at the high school, for instance?
Sure. So the high school is, you know, each day they work, uh, Martha Hardisky and the, and the team at IHS, they work really hard to come up with something called a section load. So they take a look at, um, who's in person that day, um, all the students and all of the staff. And they make sure that, um, students have appropriate supervision, if there are any teachers out, to make sure that kids are in, um, in classrooms. So we're gonna take a look at those classrooms by department, right? So we're gonna go by department. Um, so we might say, okay, these first five classes in, say, the English department, those, the, the students and staff who are part of those five classrooms in the English department are going to come today. Um, and again, we're doing this during first period, this first eighty-eight minutes, um, to, to minimize the number of contacts that students and staff will be engaged with, right? The Tompkins County Health Department has been very clear that, uh, longevity or length of time, duration of content has, contact has been one of the key factors in determining who's a close contact. So, um, we, you know, we're trying to minimize the numbers of, of those, of those contacts. Um, and so we're looking at, um, it's about forty-ish students and staff on that Monday, forty-ish students or staff on that, uh, Thursday as well. So each time we're doing testing, it's just, uh, forty folks, um, throughout, say, Ithaca High School itself, because we've, we've looked at who's in person.
Um, can I also ask, uh, so I understand this is not costing the school district any money?
That's correct. So the rapid antigen test, the Binax Now COVID-19 ag cards, these, um, have been produced and purchased by, um, you know, produced by Abbott and then purchased by the New York State Department of Health in order to prepare for the Cluster Zone Initiative. Um, they are, they're essentially a screening tool, right? They're a screening test tool. The gold standard for COVID-19 testing is still PCR testing, right? That's that molecular level testing where they're, they're actually, um, you know, making copies and copies and copies of, of, um, of cells, right, to see if, um, if COVID-19 is, is present. So, um, it's highly specific and highly sensitive, which is, again, the gold standard of, of, um, of testing. The antigen testing is, again, it's, it's more of a screener, right? So we're able to, it's, it's quick. We're able to find folks who may be positive. Anybody who does test, test positive is still gonna need follow-up testing for PCR testing. But it allows us to start that quarantine or isolation period sooner, right? While they await that PCR testing.
So we're able to get them even though we're not in a yellow zone?
We are. We are. We already have them. And they are sending us thousands more on the sixth of January.
Wow. That's great.
Yeah. And, and I would say the Tompkins County Health Department has been a great partner too. They've, um, extended their limited service lab to us while we await, um, our approval as well. Um, and so they've been, they've been wonderful partners.
So Lily, we're looking at, uh, twenty percent every two weeks and, and that will be ongoing, right? There's no, it's not just for January or February. It's, right, we're looking forward longer. Um, I'm getting the impression that we are not testing prior to students returning, students or staff returning. Um, it, it will be in the building. So essentially the first day of classes, twenty percent of the kids will be tested, correct?
We're doing twenty percent over the course of two weeks, Rob. So, um, it may be closer to ten. It may be more, right, depending on, on, um, how, how it ends up turning out. So it's a, a great number of staff volunteer to be tested. That might be how, how it works. I will also say, Rob, that, um, you know, at least until, I believe it's the thirty-first, if you're a Tompkins County resident, um, you can, as an individual, receive COVID-19 testing asymptomatic, symptomatic, anything free, free of charge. Um, and thanks to the Tompkins County Legis legislature, um, and they've extended that, um, until now. You know, it was, it was previously in, in November. So who knows if, if they'll continue that. But, um, that's been a really great help, I think, for our community.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
A quick thank you. Um, I know this has been a Herculean task. Folks have been working on it. And the logistics, um, I can't even begin to get my mind around, right? In terms of, um, the multitude of buildings, uh, you know, different age groups. And so I greatly, um, I'm very appreciative. Thank you. Uh, and having watched Ithaca College go through its own process, um, I, I have, uh, just a further appreciation. Um, it would not be the Ithaca City School District if there was not a conversation around language. And, um, I was reading an article today that talks about the difference between surveillance testing and proactive testing. And didn't know if folks had had any conversation about that, that, um, the article was making mention that more people would volunteer, that they didn't feel like they were being surveilled. Um, don't know if that's the case or not. It just was an interesting article. Happy to forward it. Um, again, Doc, it wouldn't be Ithaca City School District if we didn't have a conversation about language. So I just wanted to make sure I put that out there. Thank you again for all your work.
Yes, please forward that article. Um, Carrie, your expertise, um, has this come up in the, uh, in your, in your world? Could we get away with saying proactive instead of surveillance without a medical person pushing us?
Um, we very well could. I think, uh, the, the language that we've seen emerge from this pandemic is, is largely been behind, you know, uh, or, or just limited to the medical or the public health community. And so as more and more people are now engaging with the, with the definitions and language that exist in these spheres, I think it makes sense to, uh, reinterpret it so that it, it reflects what we're attempting to do, right? Not everyone's gonna know, you know, surveillance or terms like what, what it means to have a false negative result, et cetera. So I think that's a wise step.
Also, it's interesting that, uh, Tompkins County, um, now with their testing, they no longer say you're negative. They say you're undetected.
Exactly. You're undetected for that moment in time.
Right.
Appreciate it.
Um, this is, Anne, first of all, thank you for everything you're doing. And I'm really excited that the testing is gonna be made available. One question that I have is about student confidentiality. So if you're testing like a cohort at a time on, in the building, how, how would you manage, like, if somebody does come up with a positive test? Um, what, what kind of protocols are in place for dealing with that?
Thanks, Anne. The good fortune we've had actually in this, in this COVID-19 schooling era of saying, hey, let's call someone who's done this, has been wonderful. It's so rare. We can't do that very much these days, right? Um, so we've called a number of districts and gotten a sense of the protocols that they've implemented. And so we are utilizing their same protocols. So as soon as a positive test is identified, and we'll know within fifteen minutes, um, we immediately call everyone within the cohort and, uh, have their families, uh, come and pick them up. The principal has, um, you know, the principals have worked through protocols in terms of talking with the students, um, having them pack up their things and then where they're going to wait, how they're going to wait, et cetera. Um, and again, I, you know, I think, um, you know, we, we certainly have to and we think it's really important to make sure that we're handling each of these situations with compassion and grace. And we also have to be confidential, right? We don't go in and say, so, and so come with me real quick after we've gotten tested, right? So we've been in this space together. We're six feet apart. We're masked. We have some of the best ventilation in our region, right? The best filters in our region. We have all of these layers of, of protections and supports, right? And so obviously we want to have students and staff leave as quickly as possible. Um, and we also want to do so in a way that's respectful.
Lily, to your point, this is, this is eligible to your point about transportation. I was just gonna ask what happened to the kiddos who, um, didn't have a, who weren't driven to work? Are we gonna package them, um, on bus runs? How, what are the logistics for that? Can we, can we do it? Do we have enough bandwidth? I guess that's the real question.
Yeah, we've worked out a series of protocols. E, that's a great question that, um, we, you know, obviously go through all of the emergency contacts, et cetera. Um, and then, um, there may be, uh, special circumstances and principals know to call, um, one of us on the executive team and we find another way, um, for the student to get home. So we've been able to implement that for, um, actually since we've, since we've reopened in person. Because when we have kids who are symptomatic, right, who are exhibiting any of the symptoms listed, then, uh, you know, we've been in, we've been in this position before. So we have, we also have practice with this, um, as well. And again, trying to do so in a, in a really student-centered way. It's important.
Other questions for Carrie, Lily, anyone? All this talk of testing is making my nose itch. Um, I'm not sure whether that's a tell or not, but I mean, I really, anyway, but it's, I'm all alone here. I'm, I'm fine. Um, but we, uh, anyone else? Are we good? Thank you for all the, all the effort, as Sean has said and others have said. Tremendous undertaking. Um, know that we appreciate it and only know that we have no idea what it's really taken to, to do all this. So we, uh, we appreciate the work. So we, we appreciate the work. Appreciate the effort on behalf of the students and, and the community. It's, it's really, it is amazing. So, so thanks. Thanks, everyone. And just a few more items. Dr. Brown, a budget calendar. If we're good, one, our testing program, a proactive testing program, Sean, right? We'll call it that. Exactly. Go ahead, Doc.
Let's present a calendar, a budget calendar to the board. Go for it, Ben. There you go.
Hi, everyone. This is Amanda Verbum, the Chief Operations Officer for the district. And as you all know, all the budget season happens all throughout the year. There are some official tasks that we have to do by law as well as just really great information for the public. A lot of those, those laws come from that transparency around budget season. So what you see before you is a draft calendar. And the reason why I say draft is because obviously things come up, right? There are weather events. There are items that maybe take priority. And so there will, there may be mobility in terms of the items to this calendar and even replacement in terms of the items to its calendar. But this should give the public a really good sense of, specifically, most importantly, a lot of the dates that are set in law that school districts all across New York State must follow, including, most importantly, the Board of Education Elections and Budget Vote, which is on that top-left corner in the very front page, which is this year, currently set for May 18th, 2021. And so as you can remember, last year, when we adopted this calendar, there was a date in May. Unfortunately, we were faced with a pandemic. That budget vote date was pushed forward in the year. Currently, right now, this is, these are the dates that are set in law along with all of sort of the moments in time that the board must take action, that Tricia Beresford, our board, our district clerk, who is just brilliant with budget and making sure things get into the newspaper on time and things get run through the attorney on time. She and I will be working together. We'll be working along with our communications team to ensure that we're meeting all the benchmarks and getting everything to you, the Board of Education, as well as the public in a very timely manner, as well as a very public and transparent manner. So again, this calendar is really reflective of sort of our benchmarks. It is not inclusive of all of the work that goes into developing the budget for the district, right? So the meeting dates are here, but all of the behind-the-scenes work that's being done in terms of the meetings with budget developers, the meetings with faculty and staff, the meetings with students, the meetings with PTAs, all of those opportunities are not cataloged here, but they will be on the website as they occur and as they are set. And we try to, if this is going to still be in the virtual world, we would try to record those meetings in the past when we weren't in the virtual world and we were doing it in person. At minimum, we were sharing all of the resources and information and presentations that were given during those moments in time. So we use that website as a catalog. Board of Ed members that were at the Finance Committee on Tuesday, we had a robust discussion about our, really, our desire and our need to push information out, not to ask people to come to the information. And so we'll continue that information. That is going to be a standing agenda item on our Finance Committee. And you should be able to see results of that standing agenda item through more pushing out of information, video clips, FAQs, things that we will be tweeting out and putting on Facebook and other social media channels. So with that, Rob, that really is just a sort of an overview of the, the budget calendar. Again, this is, this is something that would, the, the board would vote on, but there may be changes in the future. And we would come to finance and let folks know about that.
Thank you, Amanda. And, and again, this budget calendar has no impact on what the governor may release his executive budget. And so we, it will be fluid and we'll continue to plan and, and process with a lot of factors that we cannot control. But we can do it. You can do it, Amanda, I'm, I'm sure. But, but as is, this is the calendar. And eventually, there will be a budget vote, and likely in May. And, and we will be able to go to the community and, and offer a budget that will meet the needs of the students in this community and, and, and explain what it all goes for. So. And certainly, there can be questions, but we do need a motion and, and second to, to adopt. And there can be further discussion after that motion and second.
I move to adopt the school budget calendar.
Thank you, Pat. A second. Thank you, Chris. Any other questions right now? If, if not, I pause one second. Tricia, please go ahead and call the role.
Rob Ainsley.
Yes.
Erin Crowell.
Yes.
Sean Everly Bradwell.
Yes.
Eldred Harris.
Yes.
Nicola Faye.
Yes.
Moira Lang.
Yes.
Chris Malcolm.
Yes.
Anne Reichlin.
Yes.
Pat Wazle.
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. Dr. Brown, do you have any other, other business for the board or the district or the community at this time?
No, sir. We are ready for Wednesday and this break. We're good.
Yes, Dr. Brown. Upcoming dates of importance? Yes, it is. Tomorrow is the last day, correct, Dr. Brown, of school for 2020? Correct, Dr. Brown? Saying yes, indeed. And we're, we're done with 2020. Everyone should take a break. Do not look at a computer for multiple days. Go outside, run around, build something with your hands. Who knows? But enjoy, enjoy the holidays. And Sean, anything for the group? Oh. All good on my end. All right. So thanks, everyone. Be safe, be well with those closest to you. And we'll see everybody in 2021. Thanks, everyone.
Holidays.
Have a good night, folks.
Bye, everyone.
Happy 2021. Night.